All right, we are at 1:00 PM. Please feel free to begin, Vicki.
Good afternoon, and thank you for attending today's candidate forum, featuring candidates running for the position of the Hoffman Estates Board of Trustees. My name is Vicki Martin, and I'm the co-president and forum chairman of the League of Women Voters of the Palatine Area, which includes not only Palatine, Schaumburg, and Hoffman Estates, but several other communities with whom we share legislative districts. Founded in 1920, here in Chicago, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that neither supports, opposes, or recommends candidates for office. The League was founded in order to help educate and inform new female voters who had just won the right to vote. The League's purpose is to promote responsibility through the informed and active participation of all citizens. Providing this forum enables members of the community to become better informed about the issues facing the community and candidates running for office. We're pleased to offer this service to you. We would like to extend our sincere thanks to Kate Niehoff and Annie Tillman from Schaumburg Township District Library, whose help and technology have made today's forum possible. I'm happy to introduce our co-host, Annie Tillman, who will be operating this webinar. And I'll now turn the forum over to Annie, who will explain the technological details of our forum.
Thank you so much, Vicki. So I will be launching a poll that will appear on your screen. Once you answer those questions, it will be removed. It helps us plan for future events such as this. As a reminder, during today's presentation, all audience members will be muted. We will not be using the chat or the raise hand features, and all of the questions for the candidates have been submitted by the audience at the time of registration or from local nonpartisan organizations. We are also offering closed captioning for today's forum. This feature can be turned on or off if you are watching on a computer. You can find that toggle to turn it off along the bottom of your screen. From a tablet on the app, this can be found in the settings section. If you are watching on YouTube, those captions will remain on the screen. I am pleased to introduce our moderator for today's forum, Catherine Sawyer. Catherine is a member of the League of Women Voters, and she is a trained moderator. We are very fortunate that she is able to be with us this afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's certainly my pleasure to be with you this afternoon to moderate this candidate forum. I'm a resident of Palatine and not eligible to vote in this election, so I've been asked to serve as an impartial facilitator for this discussion as a volunteer with the League of Women Voters. Let me take a few minutes to explain the format and the rules of our forum. All candidates were contacted by mail, email, and phone, and have agreed to abide by the ground rules provided by the League of Women Voters. They are as follows. Candidates have drawn numbers to determine speaking order. The moderator will rotate this order during the forum for questions. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statement. Next, each candidate will have one minute to answer questions. The moderator will repeat the question if necessary. If needed, a rebuttal may be requested. Each candidate may use a maximum of two rebuttals during this forum. Rebutts will be timed and limited to 30 seconds each. And at the end, each candidate will have one minute for closing statement. Candidates can see a timer and will be given a 30-second warning so that they can quickly complete their thought before they see the stop or end of their time. These limits will be enforced out of respect to all candidates. Today's forum is being recorded for the League of Women Voters' use in educating the public. A video of this forum will be available early next week on the League's website for the Palatine Area and the Schaumburg Library website. The candidates have agreed to this. No voice, image, or other duplication of this forum may be used by a candidate's representative or campaign in any campaign advertising. The League claims copyright ownership over all recordings or transcripts produced from this event and reserves the right to publicize this forum. To view the forum, please go to the League's website at www.lwpalatinearea.org. In our forum this afternoon, we'll hear from candidates hoping to fill one of three open trustee positions for the Village of Hoffman Estates. This forum is scheduled to run an hour and a half until 2:30. With us today and on the ballot are Karen Arnett, Michael Gaeta, Karen Mills, Jim Murray, Garav Patel, and Renee Robinson. Candidates, I want to thank you all for your participation. We'll begin with your two-minute opening statements, and by number, draw Mr. Gaeta. You will go first. Please start now.
Okay, thank you very much. Basically here, I've been married to Johanna, my wife, for 60 years, have four children and six grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. Attended Finn Community College, served in the Army for two years in Germany, retired from the food service industry after 42 years in the corporate world, held positions including VP of Sales, VP of Marketing, and President of a $40 million company. President of International Food Service Executive for a couple terms, and then was on their Board of Directors for a number of years, and also served as Director for National Catering Association. Member of the Chefs of Cuisine for over 35 years. Was on the teaching staff of Eldron Community College and the Culinary Department. And since 1999, my wife and I own three Seattle Sutton Healthy Distributerships. I'm a private pilot with instrument rating since 1969, and I have over 5,000 hours in the air and have owned several airplanes. I'm a member of the Civil Air Patrol, which is an auxiliary of the Air Force, and my present rank is Lieutenant Colonel and also Deputy Wing Commander for CAP of Illinois, and I'm an Incident Commander for search and rescue missions. Appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals and selected by the mayor and trustees of Hoffman Estates to serve as the Vice Chairman of the Planning and the Zoning Committee. A member of the Senior Citizens Commission of Hoffman Estates, co-chairman of the Village Green Act Committee, member of the Schaumburg Regional Airport Advisory Commission. I tried to get that all in in two minutes, and I hope that I did.
Thank you. Mr. Patel, your opening statement, please.
Good afternoon, my fellow residents. Thank you for joining us today. My name is Garav Patel. I'm a general dentist by profession. I attended Loyola University of Chicago, Lick Shore campus for my undergraduate study. I majored in mathematics, minored in statistics, and biology. I went to a Golden School of Dynasty in Boston University, and I'm married to a wonderful wife named Sohita Patel. She has a PhD in chemistry. I have two amazing boys. One is 18 years old, and the other one is 17 years old. I have had the privilege of serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission for Hoffman Estates and also a Fire and Police Commission for Hoffman Estates. I have been a resident of Hoffman Estates since 2003, and I also own my practice in Hoffman Estates since 2003, and I'm looking forward to answering any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mills, your opening statement, please.
Thank you. My name is Karen Mills, and my husband Glenn and I have been married for 47 years. We had three children, all are grown now and have families of their own. Unfortunately, we did lose my older daughter two years ago to a sudden illness and are very pleased that we still have her son-in-law, who's a Chicago police officer, and those grandchildren. We have six total grandchildren, which we adore and love to see once all these pandemics calm down. I was born in Chicago. We moved out here in 1978 and raised all three children out here through the school systems in Hoffman Estates. I was a graduate of Loyola University with a major in primary education and received my Bachelor of Science degree from there. In the city, I attended Immaculata High School, which is no longer around, and St. Vincent de Paul Grade School and St. Andrews Grade School. I am a licensed professional community association manager for a townhome association, a very large one here in Hoffman Estates, and I've been involved with the association for over 35 years, working in the office. I was a former trustee for the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District from 1996 until 2020, and I've been an active member of the Hoffman Estates Chamber of Commerce, having served over the years as their treasurer, secretary, and vice president. I've always enjoyed our chamber. I've been a trustee since 1992. Prior to that, I was Plan Commission Chairman for seven years and got to see quite a few of the major projects that have come into town over those years. I then was appointed to the board in '92 and ran for election the following year. I've been happy to serve as part of the Village. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson, your opening statement, please.
Hi, I'm Renee Robinson, and my husband Brett and I have lived in Hoffman Estates for 26 years and raised our two children, Kyle and Haley. Our children were very active in all things Hoffman Estates: baseball, softball, football, cheer, basketball, soccer. They tried them all out. I received my bachelor's degree in elementary education also from Loyola University. We have many of us from Loyola, go-ramblers, and my master's degree in counseling and human services from Roosevelt University. I continue to take classes and attend conferences so that I'm educated on latest methods and research. I've worked for Chicago Public Schools for 30 years, first as a middle school social studies and English language arts teacher, then third grade, and I am currently the bilingual coordinator, ESL teacher, and ESL coach at my school. I also teach undergraduate classes at National Lewis University. I sat on the Board of Hoffman Estates Athletic Association as secretary and was also Secretary and Vice President of Skolastics for Chicagoland Pop Warner. I still work with the Hoffman Estates Athletic Association to promote student athletes through Pop Warner's All-American Little Scholars Program. My vision for Hoffman Estates is to build community. We'll do this by making sure that resources are equitable for all residents. We need to meet the needs of everyone: seniors, vets, youth, teens, those with disabilities, and immigrants.
Ms. Robinson, you're muted.
Thank you. Okay, I'm not sure where I left off. We need to celebrate diversity of our community. There's a need to stop viewing ourselves as separate entities of Hoffman Estates, southwest and north, and we all need to say proudly that we live in Hoffman Estates. We need to grow our village to greatness and move Hoffman Estates forward.
Thank you. Ms. Arnett, your opening statement, please.
Thank you, and good afternoon, everybody. My name is Karen Arnett. I have lived in Hoffman Estates since I was six years old. The house I live in now is my childhood house. My husband and I bought it from my mom in 2002. I am a graduate of Hoffman Estates Junior High, Eisenhower Junior High, Hoffman Estates High School, Armstrong, John Muir. My husband and I were married for 19 years before he passed away four years ago. He actually really encouraged me to do this, and we both volunteered within the village since 2003, doing all different kinds of events, and that's how we, you know, got more involved with the community. I have been the past president of the Hoffman Estates Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. Mouthful of words, yes, that's why it's called HACPA for short. It's a great organization. This village is great. We are a great family. I have two older sisters. They don't consider me the youngest anymore, but they are older than me, so I'm fine with that. I have wonderful family support: brother-in-laws, my nieces, my nephews, and I just look forward to this village and look forward to what we can do.
Thank you. Mr. Murray, your opening statement, please.
Hi, I'm Jim Murray. I'm running for the office of Village Trustee. I grew up in Chicago, attended Lane Tech High School, moved to the Village of Hoffman Estates back in 1997, raised my family here, my wife and four kids. They've moved out. My wife and I loved the village so much, we decided to stay even after they left. I worked for the village since 1992 as a police officer. Retired in 2017. I'm a real estate broker right now, and I've been doing that for the past 15 years. So I did both jobs simultaneously. No stranger to working hard and being busy. I look forward to trying to help the village move forward as well.
Thank you. We'll now move on to questions. As a reminder, candidates, you'll have a minute to answer questions. And so the first question is, what do you consider the most important duties of a village trustee? Mr. Patel will begin with you. One minute, please.
Thank you. I'd like to remind the residents, and I want to quote our great President Lincoln's word: "The government is by the people, of the people, for the people." So I want to, I am representing the residents of Hoffman Estates. And since not all residents can vote on all issues at the meetings, their elect officials represent for them. So I want to remind the residents that it is my duty to represent your desires of how the village should govern. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mills, please. Ms. Mills, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Thank you for this opportunity to answer the questions. I think one of the most important things as a trustee is to be unbiased and to listen to both sides of an issue. And unfortunately, sometimes you're going to have to make a decision that others are not going to be happy with, but it's for the best interest of the community and the residents in general. So I think that's an important duty that you always have to follow. You may not always like it, but if it's for the benefit of everyone, you have to put up with it and vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson.
Hi. So I think a big part of it is open communication, making sure that they can contact us with any concerns they may have, making sure that they know that we are there to listen to them and listen to their concerns. And very similar to what Karen Mills said, there are going to be some tough decisions, but for the greater community, sometimes we have to make them. But I think if we're open to the residents as to why we've had to make that decision, and they feel a little more informed, maybe it's a little bit easier to swallow.
Thank you. Ms. Arnett, the most important duties of a village trustee. One minute, please.
I do believe that communication with residents and also your village board, your village staff, is a key component as a trustee. You have to have communication where everybody can know what's going on, whether it's via email, phone calls, texting, whether it's to the community or to your staff members or board members. That is one of the larger components that I see that has to be key to it.
Thank you. Mr. Murray.
I think it's important to consider everything in decisions. As a village trustee, we're going to be making decisions that are going to impact a lot of people. It's important to listen to the people that are most affected by those. We're not experts on everything. It's important to get information in making those decisions from the people who are experts. There has to be a forward-thinking vision, too. When businesses are coming into town, we have to consider location of those particular businesses. Some can be controversial, some can be not well-suited for certain locations. So long-range forward thinking is something that has to be considered.
Can't hear you.
Mr. Gaeta, what do you consider to be the most important duties of a village trustee? One minute, please.
Okay, and you heard majority of the people. I've been on the, as a trustee, for the past eight years, and I think the biggest thing is that you have to listen to what they say, all right? And the thing is that with the present administration that we have, the biggest thing that we have for the residents is that we have the experience. We have the experience in management, all right? And yes, just like Karen Mills indicated, sometimes when we make decisions, not everybody agrees with them, but the biggest thing is, as long as it's for the whole village. So yes, listening and doing and complying with as much as possible, and to be transparent, that's the biggest thing. As far as bringing in businesses, that's another topic which we'll come up with later. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question. What qualities do you possess that make you well-suited to be on the Hoffman Estates Board of Trustees? We'll start with Ms. Mills.
What qualities do I have? I think a lot of it, first of all, is experience. Having worked with the staff at Hoffman Estates and other elected officials all these years, I've learned a lot, and I think those qualities are very important. One quality that I think helps me also is my personal employment as a property manager. In a lot of ways, it's almost like running a small municipality on a similar level. You have to put together the rules, you have to put together a budget. I've had to do that over the years. I put together a multimillion-dollar budget for my association. I have had to enforce rules. I have to do customer service. And sometimes it's not what somebody wants to hear, and other times it is. So I think that's a great quality that I can bring forward again for another four years.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson.
Thank you. So I think I bring fresh perspective. I bring fresh ideas. I've had experience in positions of leadership and on different board positions where I am able to give my viewpoint, but I also have to listen to others, and I have to listen to the experts before we can make a decision. I've worked on a team through school and through the different boards, and I know how to work well with others. So I think I bring that experience with me, and I bring new ideas of how we can help Hoffman Estates to grow.
Thank you. Ms. Arnett.
Thank you. I think one of my biggest qualities is that I wear my heart on my sleeve, and I listen a lot. I'm probably one of the quietest people on the board. I don't ask a lot of questions unless I need to ask a question, but I do listen, and I take everything to heart with whatever someone is telling me. I agree to disagree, and that's, I think, my biggest asset.
Thank you. Mr. Murray.
So I've always been involved in being a member of a team from even as a kid playing athletics. My career as a law enforcement officer, working as a group, input from others, consideration for others. I have the forward vision in terms of thinking outside of the box. I'm not a career politician. Politics is something that is very new to me. This is something that I'm doing out of passion for the Village of Hoffman Estates. I have served the village. I dedicated a lifetime to doing it, and the people are very important to me. So with that in mind, this is a position that I will look forward to contributing to.
Thank you. Mr. Gaeta.
I had to take it off of mute. Would you say the question again, please?
I'd be happy to. What qualities do you possess that make you well-suited to be on the Hoffman Estates Board of Trustees?
Okay, thank you. Well, you know what? I bring quite a bit of experience from the corporate world and even my independence as far as being a small business owner on that. And the thing is that fully understanding what balance the budget means, all right? So the biggest asset that I have to give to Hoffman Estates is my experience all these years, and not just from the business world, right? Just with the search and rescue, with the Air Force and the Civil Air Patrol. That's always working with people. And at times, we would have, you know, 200 people out and to be the Incident Commander, making sure that every department does what it's supposed to be doing, and if they need assistance or help, we're right there for it. And the village is really and truly no different than any big business, and you do have to work with everybody, every department. That's why experience is so important when we just hired a village, done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Patel.
Thank you. So I'm a general dentist practicing since 1997. So I'm also a small business owner since 1997. I bring a lot of experience running a business and also dealing with patients. Over the years, in 24 years, I have dealt with more than 10,000 to 15,000 patients. Every patient is different. You have to work with multiple personalities, come up with the different situations. I've also served on Planning and Zoning Commission and Police and Fire Commission. So I also understand what it takes to run a village. And I think thinking long-term, not just short-term, is the best way to make a village move forward and to grow to greatness. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question. Did the village continue to adequately serve its constituents during the disruptions caused by the COVID-19 pandemic? What adjustments were successful, and what could have been done better? Ms. Robinson, we'll start with you.
Thank you. So I don't know that the village residents were adequately serviced. We didn't, originally weren't opening up big testing sites. Ultimately, at the Now Arena did, but months into testing, we're not offering vaccines for our residents anywhere. And I know that there has been some talk of counties that we couldn't, but other communities are getting it. Other communities are organizing actions to get vaccines for their residents. I also feel that information was not very forthcoming. And I say this as a resident and to other residents we've spoken to and to small business owners, that they didn't feel that they were communicated well with during this whole pandemic. So I think that's something we would have to work on better would be, how do we communicate to citizens, get them the vaccines? Also, we need social services for people who have been held up in their homes. How are we servicing seniors?
Thank you. Ms. Arnett.
Thank you. I do believe in some aspect that we did do a very good job during this pandemic with the citizens. Not only were we concerned about our citizens, but we were concerned about safety for everybody. So we actually canceled all of our events so nobody would, you know, be in large group gatherings. We canceled all of our festivals. We canceled all of our meetings. We had a lot of virtual meetings. We did the social distancing. We installed the hand sanitizers in every building that we have. We do have a Health and Human Resources Department, which is very good, and they've been communicating with our seniors and for the injections. I know a lot of people are still in the 1A class or the seniors 65 and older that are getting the shots right now. I myself earn 1B, so I don't qualify yet, but I will get there in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murray.
So I think that there were some opportunities during the pandemic that were missed. In speaking with business owners, they kind of felt as if they were abandoned in certain cases. There was a tremendous lack of communication, I'm told. Business owners had seen businesses in surrounding towns being helped by their villages, opening tents, providing venues so that they could try to maintain some income. Our village didn't seem to do that. A coordinated effort is another thing that was an opportunity that perhaps could have been capitalized on. The villages of Addison and Bensonville, for example, worked in tandem with each other to vaccinate all their residents. So outside-of-the-box thinking is something that probably would have benefited our residents, and that's the fresh perspective that I keep coming back to.
Thank you. Mr. Gaeta.
Yes, I just took it off of mute. Do you know what? As far as with our health department that we have at Hoffman Estates, they were trying to get the county to set up for, to get the vaccinations. And we were trying everything just to hear people say that we really and truly have it. I just don't even understand where they can get information like that. And even when we offered the arena that they could come in for that, and they had turned that down because there was a number of reasons. And yes, just as trustee Arnett was indicating, the thing is that we're televised every Monday, and we were by virtual for a while. And then even when we had, we were six feet apart and so forth. And as far as the sanitation and the village hall that we've done, businesses, we have talked to many of them. We were the ones that started to initiate the outdoor dining from that state. dining from that standpoint. And of course, we had to go. Oh, it's red. Okay, I'll stop.
Thank you. Mr. Patel.
Thank you. So I think during a crisis, you can actually see the qualities of your elected officials. Unfortunately, I feel that our current officials let us down. Particularly in the area of getting vaccines for our seniors. Like Jim Murray said, Willis of Bensonville, Willis of Addison, even a private senior citizen group were able to get twelve hundred vaccines for their members, which my parents were lucky enough to get. So I understand that they tried, but they didn't succeed. That is exactly the point. We need to find a way, if a private citizen can get twelve hundred vaccine for its members, how can an elected official not do for their residents? That is the biggest letdown. As far as the businesses are concerned, you need to talk to them, give them ideas on how they can survive during a pandemic, particularly the COVID nineteen. So the restaurants were closed down, dining halls were closed down. That is correct. But you could have told them how to operate within the closed dining area by takeout foods and et cetera.
Thank you. Ms. Mills.
Yes. I have to differ with a couple of these viewpoints because I feel we really did do an adequate job as best as we could, given a situation no one ever expected to come up. We immediately put into force our emergency operation system. We immediately worked with our own staff to never close down village services. There were no layoffs. We had several of our employees work from home just to keep things going. And as to inoculations, we are doing our best. You got to remember, it was controlled by the county. We do have vaccine coming in next week for seniors. And we've been offering it to our seniors without making a big push because we don't want an overabundance of other people trying to get in. We work with businesses by setting up guidelines immediately of how they could do their tents, how they could do heating within the tents. We did as much as we could. Yes, there's always room for more, but we did what we could.
Thank you. Next question. What infrastructure projects do you feel are a priority to address in the village over the next two to three years? And how should they be paid for? We'll start with Ms. Arnett.
Well, definitely our street revitalization project that we are going to keep going and that is definitely with our funded. We do have an old fire station that can be put on the back burner. We do have the, the Village Green, which is being worked on, and that comes from a special fund that's only used for that particular project. They've already started that during the COVID nineteen and that was a good good section to do through the COVID because it was not open to the public. But I would say probably just the, the street revitalization. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murray.
So since I've lived in the village for twenty-five years and during that time, there have been rainstorms, obviously. One of the things that plagues the village residents, not only myself, but my neighbors, is flooding. There's tremendous drainage issues that exist throughout the village. Road closures, flooded backyards, flooded basements. This is something that needs to be addressed. It's gone on long enough. The other opportunity with infrastructure is transportation, primarily for seniors and disabled. I hear this regularly from my neighbors, from residents. There's opportunity. Pace exists in the village, but the borders that Pace serves are very limited and there's really no alternative from the village. Yes, there are alternatives from the county and the township, but that's not good enough, especially when towns around us have good alternatives. Shambur, for example. They offer dial right. But those are projects that I, that I see opportunity with.
Thank you. Mr. Gaeta.
You know what? Not to reiterate as far as what trustee Mills and trustee Arnett has said as far as the infrastructure, there's no question about that. And with the roads, we already have the program set up. We know which roads are going to be reconstructed, which ones are going to be just paved. And when we see sidewalks, especially when a resident indicates to us that there's flooding, we send out public works and either they have to remove the sidewalk and so forth. The backyards on many of the, it's private property. And as long as it doesn't, where it, from the village standpoint, if it's private property, we really and truly cannot go in there and to do anything for it. And as far as transportation, yes, we do. In fact, the thing is that with the, with Pace and with the Barrington, where we have the setup that we set up for them, for people to come in to catch the bus, we also have a discount with them. We also have with, with the taxi. And I see that it's red. Okay.
Mr. Patel.
Well, continuing out what Jim Murray said, let me ask the residents that have problems, broken sidewalks, drainage in your backyard. Yes, backyard are private properties. But if all the neighbors in your subdivision have drainage issue in your backyard, then it should become the village priority to fix it. All those residents, if you had a choice, would you spend a million dollars fixing a dirt hill so you can, the patrons can have a better sight view of a concert? Or would you rather see that money being spent to fix yours broken sidewalks or the drainage issue in your backyards? And remember, when you go to a concert, most people are going to have fun, listen to the music. You don't need to see the band or the singer that's playing on the stage. So I would ask those residents, how would you have want your village to spend that million dollars? Fix those broken sidewalks or fix the drainage issues in your backyard? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mills.
First of all, the money that was used for the hill out by the Sears Arena, or now arena as we call it, did not come out of the general funds. It came out of specific funds that could only be used for the, the Village Green area. It was bond proceeds and it had to be used for those areas. It's not a question of use of, if we had a choice, yes, we would have rather done other things with it, but we didn't. It had to be used out there. Now, as to the actual question, we need to continue with our road improvements. Sewer lines, yes. And we are working hard to get our sewer system updated. I wish, the way to pay for it, we'll keep applying for grants. This money we got from the federal government and the state recently will help us put back money into our reserve funds too, which can always help with, well, we need funds to get projects done. Thank you.
Thank you. I see, Mr. Patel, but let's let Ms. Robinson answer the question first. Ms. Robinson, the question is, what infrastructure projects do you feel are a priority to address in the village over the next two to three years and how should they be paid for?
Thank you. So I feel that the drainage, and everyone talks about it, but it is a huge problem all across Hoffman of flooding, flooding on the streets, flooding on the sidewalks in the front. It's not just in backyards. We have a lot of power outages. And I know that people are getting very upset at the amount of power outages, especially for all the people that are now working at home. So we need to look into getting our power lines buried. The other issue of transportation is huge. Yes, there's pace, but the, the borders and the boundaries of it are not necessarily beneficial to all residents of Hoffman. There's paratransit, again, not beneficial to all residents of Hoffman. If you're not three quarters of a mile from a fixed route, paratransit cannot help you. We have, you know, like Palatine Township offers for rides for some citizens, for some residents. But the hours are very bad and you have to give a three day warning.
Thank you. Mr. Patel, would you still like to use your rebuttal?
Yes.
You have thirty seconds.
So let me ask those residents the same questions. The current officials have been in office for over two decades. Are your problems recent or have they been there for all these years and nothing has been addressed? That is why you need a fresh way of thinking to move Hoffman Estates forward and solve those problems. Yes, not all problems can be solved in the first four years or eight years, but you had two decades of chance to fix those problems and they're still there. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. If you win a seat on the board, what three goals would you like to accomplish in your first year? And we'll start with Mr. Murray.
So the three goals, we'll start with the first one, which would be tax reductions, primarily by reducing some of the tax liability that exists in the village. Tremendous liability exists with the Sears Center and that accounts for a capital expenditure of fourteen percent of the village's overall operating budget just to keep the Sears Center open. Infrastructure would be the second thing. That would be the drainage. Transportation, I know I'm coming back to it, but in speaking with seniors and disabled, this is something that's extremely important to them. They have no other opportunity. This is a lifeline for them. And those are the three things I would focus on.
Thank you. Mr. Gaeta.
Okay, one, I think that one of them is the economic development. That is a big concern with me as far as bringing in not only new business, but also since I'm a small business owner and I understand what it is to work with the small business owner and see what we can do with them. The next thing is safety. Safety for the police department, the fire department, public works because that's very important and that's the reason that we have not laid off anybody as trustee Mills had indicated. On that, we work within our budget, right? And, and of course, with public works and the infrastructure, there's no question about that. That's an ongoing thing for it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patel.
So this is the most important questions that every resident should be asking. Number one, the now arena or the Sears Center. Over the years, it has lost so far fourteen million dollars since its existence. Second, in two thousand and three, our police officers force was hundred and fifteen officers. Today it's eighty-five. Small businesses, they need to grow, not close down. How, what about Sears Center? Okay, let's talk about fourteen million dollars. That money could have been, that's yes, thirteen percent of your property tax goes to the village. That's hundred million dollars of property tax that just wasted. We lost it. Why? Because it's not been managed properly. We need to fix that issue. It's losing about one point five million to three million dollars a year. That's a lot of money. Yes, it grossed about close to, so I'd say a million dollars last year in a pandemic, but that is gross revenue. You're still losing money on it. As far as the police is concerned, you will have an increased response time because of decreasing police officers and increase in residents. I will continue.
Ms. Mills.
Well, to answer the question, first of all, the three important things I want to look to see in my first, in the continuing into the year is first of all, our continued redevelopment of aging centers and our development of the few sites we do have left out there that can be developed. You need to have experience going into that because any site that's still left undeveloped in this town is not an easy site to develop. And I feel that the years I put in with plan commission chairman and as chairman of the planning, building and zoning committee for many years, that would help me find the best ways to fill those. We need to keep working on a workable budget and we need to keep going with our street revitalization program and the, the flooding issues. Yes, we've been working on sewer lines and we need to continue doing that. And I think that's important as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll repeat the question. If you win a seat on the board, what three goals would you like to accomplish in, in the first year? Ms. Robinson.
I would like to see us build our community feel, celebrate the people, celebrate the diversity we have. More than just, let's have a, you know, a party at the village board, a big festival celebrating these things, bringing all the people of Hoffman Estates together. I'd like to see a boys and girls club come in to Hoffman Estates. And along with that, a senior center attached to it. Let's take some of what the seniors have to offer and have them mentor the children of Hoffman Estates and the youth. Put in a teen center. Teens have nowhere to go really right now. It's different from when we were all growing up, right? They need somewhere to go. So attach some kind of teen center, bring in people who can bring some vocational training for the kids. It's not necessarily, college is not right for everyone. We need to offer more things to them. And definitely infrastructure, transportation and drainage and electric. Those would be big ones.
Thank you. Ms. Arnett.
Thank you. I definitely would like to see us to keep bringing in new economic development like Microsoft, Bellworks. Those are going to be huge when they are up and running in the village. I also like to have more in-depth compatibility with our commissions, whether it's the youth commission becoming more viable to our senior commission and then the senior commission more viable with our youth commission. Try and get them together so that they can learn from each other. And then we do have, every quarter, we do have with, without the pandemic, coffee with the board. I'd like to see more of the community people come and support that. It's a great one-on-one with the village board and all of the department heads that appear there. And that gives great questions, great responses. And I think the community would benefit from coming to more of those. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question. What additional resources would you fund to encourage community involvement to reduce interpersonal violence and increase public safety in the village? Mr. Gaeta.
When we're talking about safety, there's no question about that. In fact, somebody just brought up that as far as the police department and part of my function is public health and, and, and human services, which is the police department and the fire department. And in talking to the police chief and as far as saying that they're understaffed, I don't know where people get this type of information because we are staffed properly. And the education that the, the police officers get, I would mess that to anybody in any of these suburban areas around with us and also with, with the fire department. The thing is that constant training, education, we have no choice, right? And we have one of the finest police departments in a surrounding area without a doubt and also with the fire department. And what is that? That is safety to all of the residents of Hoffman Estates. And we maintain that and we will keep that up. No matter what you hear, oh, my time is up. Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Patel.
So let's clear up some misunderstanding if there is any. When we're talking about decreasing police force, we're not talking about jeopardizing or increasing crime rate. We're talking about increasing response time. In two thousand and three, when I moved in, there were hundred and fifteen officers. That means at a given shift, which was an eight hour shift, not a twelve hour shift, there were thirteen police officers patrolling the entire Hoffman Estates. Our village has grown, especially on the western side. Currently, there's only two officers patrolling west of Barrington. That is not enough. There's far more houses being developed in that area. So that is what we're talking about, that we need to bring the level of police officers back to where they're at. We want to be proactive, not reactive, wait for something to happen and then say, oh, we should have reacted differently. We also like to remind our residents, this new board wants to think long term, not short term. It is great that Microsoft decided to come here, but the location is not the ideal location. My time is up, but hopefully I can continue on that in a later time.
Thank you. I'll repeat the question. What additional resources would you fund to encourage community involvement to reduce interpersonal violence and increase public safety in the village? We'll continue with Ms. Mills.
Well, I think it all stems into education too. We, we need to make sure that our, our various first responders continue to see what needs to be done. They need to keep more informed and learning. I think that the status could cost us a lot of things differently because of the new police rules that they're putting into effect. And we have to see how that plays out for our town. But I, I agree with, with trustee Gaeta. You know, when you look back at the files, we're only down I, and I can't remember off the top of my head if it's one or two officers from within the last five years. And our town crime rate has not increased tremendously. And if you have those response times, yes, they're important, but they are helping to keep crime down, which is a main problem.
Thank you. Continuing with Ms. Robinson.
Thank you. So some resources I think that should be brought in uh, are, and I've already said at the Boys and Girls Club, senior center, teen center. More opportunities for our seniors, our experienced workers to talk to the teens, talk to them about different career opportunities. Make them see that what their future can hold for them. That there's so many things out there for them that they can be looking forward to. We need mentoring going on in the village for our youth. For even older teens, young twenties, people who still need some guidance as to where they want to go. Social services, especially during this time, um, are a, a big issue. But I really need, we need, think we need to take all of the amazing experience that we have in the village and have them bring it to our, our youth and our teens and help them to grow.
Thank you, Ms. Arnett.
Thank you. Um, we have a lot of opportunities for adults and young kids in this village, which people may not even know about it because of the pandemic has caused us to, to close everything down. We have a twelve-week course for the citizens, police and fire academies for adults eighteen and older. Um, gives you tremendous insight on what the police and fire actually do throughout their days and nights. We also have for the young kids, we have a junior uh, citizens, police academy, which our police officers run. And they go on to the explorer program, which is very, very helpful and it's been a great program for our young adults because they actually go on to be police officers in our village or another village, another community. Um, a lot of people don't know about those, just because I said that the pandemic caused us to close everything down. It's a great opportunity for anybody in the village to go ahead and go through those. I would definitely recommend it. And along with updating, you know, all of our training and keeping it going. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Murray.
So this is near and dear to me. Um, there's been some talks, some mention that the village was able to proceed without any layoffs, but it's important to recognize that as Mr. Patel brought up, through attrition, the numbers of law enforcement officers have dropped over the years. They haven't been replaced. In fact, the gaps have been filled by the traffic unit, juvenile detective. Speeding autos in town is up. I hear complaints all the time about speeding autos and without a traffic unit, you're taking resources off the street to try to deal with situations like that. It escalates. Additionally, we have an office in the police station for a social worker, only we don't have a social worker. Many of the calls related to police response are directly related to domestics, drug abuse. Things that a social worker would be extremely valuable for. So to say that we're not laying off people, we're not bringing the right people in and letting the right people continue doing the job they need to do for the citizens.
Thank you. Uh, the next question, if you were to act, change, I'm sorry, let me start over. If you were to change one thing in the village, what would it be and why? And we'll start with Mr. Patel.
So that's a very complex question to be able to answer that in one minute. Okay, so if you ask me, one thing I would change or what I would bring as if I'm elected would be thinking long-term, not short-term. It is great that when you develop a land that is just vacant or just a fire, uh, farmland into a building so you can increase revenue, but then again, I would think long-term for location. Bellwork is building a residential and a business community in that area. Now, right down the street, you have a data center with a power substation now that is going to be built. As a resident or a new resident, would you want to buy a, or a condominium or a house next to a power substation? No, could that be, now you, there's an empty lot next to the jerseys and other areas surrounding that area. Now who's going to come next to a power substation? Is there a better location? I think so. If you move further down west, uh, by the Rock Quarry, that would have been ideal location for a data center. We could talk to Microsoft. There's no residents near it.
Thank you. Ms. Mills.
One thing that I would uh, change in the village and why. I'd like to see, and, and this is kind of going along with what others have said today, I'd like to see more coordination between our commissions. And uh, more volunteers willing to get involved. Because it, it's kind of hard to, to complain about things if you've not involved. And you need to have the people try it out. One of the things that I came up, that I had mentioned with the Daily Herald inter uh, questionnaire is something with uh, getting the seniors and the youth commissions to work together to get volunteers for a call-out list that could be uh, in the winter months with the teens, helping the seniors out. And that could also be something that would be useful for school service awards and scouting awards. And I'd like to pursue that and I'm planning to bring that up in the near future.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson, one thing you'd change about the village.
One thing I would change would be that we take advantage of our location. Uh, we're we have a great location, we're right by ninety. We could take advantage of all the people who are west of us, who are going into the city, going to Rosemont District for areas, and we could have things here for them. Right now, we're so segregated by our different areas, we don't have a central area for people to think of as downtown Hoffman Estates, Hoffman Estates Entertainment District, something like that. But we need to take advantage of where we are and bring in people from all the surrounding commi- uh, communities rather than people from Hoffman Estates going out to all of these other communities. We have to make them want to stay here.
Thank you, Ms. Arnett.
Can you repeat the question one more time, please?
Absolutely. If you were to change one thing in the village, what would it be and why?
I think I would probably change or get her, get a better attic, aspect of our communication system, whether um, we activate more of an emergency system, um, just to make sure that everyone is informed on what we do, where we do it, how we do it, whether it's you know, bulletins, our website, um, the Channel Six News um, that comes across every day, every day that people can watch on. It's a lot of information. If people don't know it's there, they're not going to, you know, they're not going to use it. Um, more communication with the seniors, more communications with the youth, more communications with everybody. I just want to, you know, bring that back, make sure it's up and running and just really get it going for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murray.
So this is uh, this is kind of in a cool tale on Renee's comment, Ms. Robinson's comment, and also Mr. Patel's comment. Forward thinking, um, yes, it's we have a location that's right off of I ninety, convenient to everything. We're surrounded by towns that are booming. And yet we're kind of struggling a little bit, and I think that has something to do with some of the forethought that goes into decisions that are made. Mr. Patel brought up the data center and its proximity to Bellworks. Well, the location of the data center is at Barrington Road, uh, just north of I ninety, Barrington and Lakewood. It's a, it's a location that is ideally suited for commercial development. Um, that was going to be the location where Myers was going to be going in, but that fell through. Right now, it's perfect spot for commercial, not industrial. I'm all in favor of bringing the data center in. Just not there because it's a stigma that's going to prevent other businesses from wanting to utilize that site because it's.
Thank you. Mr. Gaeta.
Yes, that's a very interesting question. And you know what? I have been on the a trustee now for two terms, eight years, and I'm very impressed with uh, the trustees and the mayor. I, I can't really come off the top of my head, what would I change? Because we work as a team, we uh, agree to disagree. And the thing is, the many ideas that they bring, I, we all listen. So at this point, I would just keep going forward, what we were doing because experience says everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mills, would you like to use a rebuttal?
Yes, I would. In regards to this, uh, the Microsoft Center. What hasn't been fully explained yet, uh, is that is the only spot they would go in town. And part of it has to do with the location as it applies to their other one they're building in Elk Grove Village. And in most cases, they're also, they also want to be near all that commercial area because they feel it will be beneficial on both sides. So it was not a choice of us saying, well, how about you go over to this site? We would not have gotten them if it didn't go there. And we still continue with Meyer trying to get them in.
Thank you. Mr. Patel, would you like to use a rebuttal? This will be your second rebuttal. You have thirty seconds, please.
So add to trustee, what the trustee Mills said, yes. Maybe Microsoft did say we wanted there, but are we looking out for the future residents of the Bellworks area? This is the forward thinking that we were talking about. It's okay if a, a big corporation tells you, this is where I want it. You are building a residential community in that beautiful area. You could grow other businesses that would thrive off those residents, not bringing a warehouse that's the data center and put a power hub station next to it. That's what my.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next question. What do you feel the village can do at the local level to contribute to the battle to confront climate change? Ms. Mills will begin with you.
Well, one of the things that we're looking into with the village is, um, we've been doing a great effort on greening for greatness. And uh, when we built our police station and our new fire station out west, we achieved uh, goals, so they were gold rated. Also, another thing we're looking into is um, charging stations and should developments as they're coming in, install charging stations and also bike racks so people can commu- can get from place to place on their bikes, which a lot of people do these days. Those are, in fact, those are two questions that are coming up on referendum questions, which are strictly advisory, just to see what the public feels about those. So I think those are ways that we're trying to contribute to the uh, the greening of the, of the area.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
So I think that we should, our streetlights, more of them should become solar powered with power backup. I know that we have brought in LED lights to try to help with that. Um, but there's so many of them that can be solar powered. I think water barrels should be made available to residents of Hoffman Estates so that they can use that water for um, for their grass, for their gardens, for things like that. Some mulching areas, you know, a lot of people like to mulch and it's wonderful and it's great for the environment. But people have concerns that it's bringing animals, pests into their area. Many people have small dogs, coyotes are coming more and more. And so something like that where we could have a mulching area and then people could even get some of the compost from it to put into their own gardens.
Oops, thank you, Ms. Arnett.
Hi, um, not quite sure how to answer this, but I'll, I'll try my best. Um, I do know there is um, over by Public Works, there is like a mulching station where people can actually go if they want free mulch instead of going to buy it. Uh, I do know that we have a lot of green thumbs in our village. Um, we take care of our trees that need to be taken care of. Um, if they're sick or dying, we actually, you know, have our our beretists, I think, I'm not sure what they're called, but um, they come out and they take a look at it. So, I mean, we take great pride and how the village looks and we've gotten quite a few awards for it. But I think just, you know, keeping everything green and making sure everything is running smoothly, making sure we take care of what we need to take care of. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll repeat the question. Uh, what do you feel the village can do at the local level to contrib- contribute to the battle to confront climate change? Mr. Murray.
So a lot of, a lot of the things that were mentioned make a lot of good sense. Um, the rain barrels, the solar panels. Um, I think that green rooftops on some of the buildings that are coming into town is another opportunity. It's necessary to exercise some caution with some of the green uh, ideas. For example, we don't, we don't want to have wind turbines and things like that. But I think that the mindset of going green is, is definitely uh, worthwhile for the village to always have an open mind to.
Thank you, Mr. Gaeta.
Yes, a lot has been said, so to repeat a lot of that stuff, no, um, the solar panels that we have approved are for many houses, if, if that's what they would like to do. Are we, are we green space? There is no question about that whatsoever, what uh, trustee Arnett has said and uh, even with uh, Murray and with Karen Mills and so forth. Yes, we are very concerned with that and that, and that stays as far as a topic uh, with us and with uh, Public Works as far as maintaining uh, the areas that, and they do an excellent job for that. Um, basically, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Patel.
So one of the way that we, I would think about combating uh, climate change is uh, going forward, purchase uh, vehicles that are electric. So when you're replacing public work vehicles, uh, go, try to do it as electric vehicles. Uh, put in ordinance, so when you're building houses, make sure they use green technology as much as possible. Uh, that would be one way. And of course, like we talked about replacing existing or when you're placing new streetlights, use them as solar, so they're self-sufficient. Uh, those are some of the ways that you can uh, address the climate change issue.
Thank you. Moving on to our next question. Uh, what would you do to ensure the village is welcoming and inclusive to immigrants and newcomers? We'll start with Ms. Robinson.
Okay, so there's a lot of things that I would do. We definitely would have to have some kind of community committee that's going to show them some ways. How do you write a resume? How do you fill out an application? How do you fill out a housing application? Where can you go to get housing? Where are the food pantries if you need them? Do we have ESL classes for adults? Um, all of these things need to be offered, some social services for them as they're coming into this new community and they're afraid. They don't necessarily speak the language, they don't know the culture, they don't know what many of the customs are. So they need to be made apprised of all of these things. And if we could have some kind of social center, maybe then back to this Boys and Girls Club, Senior Center, something like that, have an area for immigrants so that they can get some of the needs that met that they need. I know I went fast, but I knew I only had a minute and I had a lot of thoughts on that.
Thank you, Ms. Arnett.
Basically, I'm, I'm a little bit along the lines of, as Renee, um, but I think maybe some sort of a welcoming package um, where it would include a lot of the ideas that, that Renee had for people who are not familiar with the area. They don't know what to do, where to go, they're scared, they're not sure who to communicate with, how to get there, um, who to call. Um, I think just some sort of a welcoming package would be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
So Renee kind of touched on a lot of things that come to mind and I, I don't want to repeat things that she's already said, but um, these are very important to people who are unfamiliar. Healthcare is another one. Um, it, it's inevitable that people are going to need healthcare and they have to be directed to how to get that resource. I think that the village has an opportunity to play a very important role in doing that with the welcoming package that's already been mentioned. Information sharing should be paramount.
Excellent. Mr. Gaeta.
Correct. Everything that has been said, there's no question about that. And as far as uh, diversity, uh, Hoffman Estates is uh, right up there as far as diversity. And the thing is that I, I think it's an excellent idea to have committee. That uh, with somebody that comes in, I know with our uh, human health and services department that we have quite a few people that come in there and they are bilingual. So this way they don't have to be um, looking at, uh, at least they could be understood, right? Uh, from that standpoint, but yes, um, we, we probably should have something like that, but it's again what Karen Mills said. It's committees and the amount of committees that we have, right? The thing is that we need people to come on those committees. Just because we have the committee and you have nobody that wants to volunteer on them, then you have to start all over again. But no, I, I think it's an excellent idea. And Renee, you came up with excellent ideas. I go along with that also. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Patel.
So I would agree with trustee Arnett and Renee Robinson's idea. That is a great idea. When someone moves into a community, there are When someone moves into a community, they're already scared. They don't know what to expect. And if we send them a welcome package and say, hey, these are the things we offer here. Uh, I don't know if the village, uh, I'm sure, uh celebrates all different religions holidays. Maybe we can start doing that so though we can list saying, hey, here are some of the, all the holidays that we celebrate. And that way they feel more welcome into our community. And Hoffman Estates is a great diverse community. We welcome everyone. So I think there's no issue on that.
Thank you, Ms. Mills.
Yeah, I think that the village has tried in the past to do some of this. We have uh lists of translators for, for I don't know how many different languages that the uh village can contact and help introduce information to newcomers. Also, we have the Hoffman Estates Resource Center, which was open next to Hoffman Estates High School. And in there, um Renee, they do a lot of those classes already, at least they've tried to, but it's getting the people to come. You can build it, but they're not going to come. And and a lot of times, um, different nationalities, they tend to want to stay within their own groups and they're they're scared of coming out. So we have to be able to reach out to them, as Mike was saying, with volunteers to get them to know that we are friendly and we do want to help them. But we definitely need to keep working on that as we go forward.
Thank you. Our next question. What can be done to make the village more friendly to walkers and bike riders? Ms. Arnett.
Um, well, um, definitely get more pathways, uh make sure there's, you know, better lighting. Um, I know that some of the streets now have bike paths, bike lanes, which I think is excellent and awesome. I just, you know, think having those would help a lot. I I don't go bike riding by myself. Um, I don't go walking by myself because I'm, you know, by myself. I'm, and it's at night, I won't go walking by myself at night. Um, unless it's a well-lit area and um stuff like that. So um, thank you.
I apologize, Mr. Murray.
So we already have some bike paths that exist in the uh the local forest preserves. It's very nice, it's very helpful. Some of the village streets are already designated as as uh bike areas. It needs to be expand, expanded on though. Um, many of the paths, of course, are in some of the less populated areas. The challenge is for people to get from populated areas to the less populated areas. The other thing is people oftentimes will use these paths for exercise. It makes sense to put um some mile markers or some uh some identifiers so they can see how far they are, how far they've gone, how far they have to go from the end of the path. Um, just a few things to keep in mind.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gaeta.
Yes, excellent question. And you know, the thing is that uh with the bike paths, we've been working with the county and working with the park districts where um we have actually, and I don't know the exact number and it would probably surprise all of us as far as the, how many miles, right? That uh that we have contributed and worked with the park district with Tony Prankwinkle, who was the president of the um the county on that, and they have worked with us very uh very closely. And also the many, many streets, if you look around and there is, it's designated as far as for a bike path. Some of these streets are narrow, all right, which we really have to be careful about. But anyways, are are we looking for that? Yes, we're doing everything possible. And there's quite a few bike paths that we have already because there's quite a few people riding their bicycles on there. So uh, yes, we're doing the job for it.
Thank you. Mr. Patel.
Well, Hoffman Estates is a great location as far as bike path, I think, because we're surrounded by great forest preserves areas with bike paths. So my only concern is if we put a bike paths on a uh condensed populated streets, so you just might be accident prone to. Um, so that's the only concern. By west side of Hoffman Estates, uh all the residents are walking. I mean, it's great, there's less traffic, less condensed. So we're surrounded by great forest preserve with bike paths, so and residents are encouraged to use those. If they're not familiar with it, we can find a way to make sure that they are aware what paths are nearby and how long, how long is the miles and everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mills.
Well, I kind of agree with everyone else. We we've got some wonderful bike paths. And our goal over the last couple of years is to, is to unite all of them together. And in fact, we recently received a grant from Cook County to uh connect from out by Route fifty-nine underneath the bridge going uh from the tollway over into one of the other paths. So we're continuing to work on those as a village. Also, if people with walkers out, that are walking out there, if you see a problem with the sidewalk, let us know because we don't want to have tripping hazards out there too. So uh I think we've, we've done a great job on bike paths and walking paths with, with our sidewalks. Also, years ago, when we, we went through a rule where if you built a new development on property that had been undone before, you had to add a sidewalk in front, so that way it was there for people to walk on.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Robinson.
So I am a walker, big walker, and I think Hoffman Estates has some beautiful, fabulous paths. Again, we've got the forest preserves. I think one of the problems comes in is residents are shoveling their sidewalks. But when you're out by a park or um some of the schools, the sidewalks are not done and you're forced to go into the streets. And I think the majority of people at this time of year, because the paths are so snow covered, are walking through their neighborhoods. And I think this is a big problem and people have been talking about this. We need the sidewalks to be shoveled, all of them. And I know it should, not saying it should be top priority, I'm just saying that it needs to somehow be done. Um, we also have those beautiful bike paths. They just completed that one that goes um alongside Roselle Road over Central. Fabulous, so much safer for bikers and for walkers to be able to use that path. And uh trustee Mills, from what you're saying, it sounds like it'll be something similar over by fifty-nine that's just connecting everything. And that's wonderful for bikers. I think just cleaning up some of them.
Thank you. Our next question. Many residents feel they don't have a voice in their local government. How would you improve communication between the village and the public and make yourself more accessible to village residents? We'll start with Mr. Murray.
Yeah, this is something that's, we've already touched on. Communication is is uh definitely, I don't want to say lacking, but there's opportunity for improvement. I know that the village board meetings are in an open forum, they're televised during COVID. Uh, that's helpful so residents can kind of see what's going on. There has to be a little bit more engaging, a little bit more interaction. Um, there has to be more opportunity for residents to participate in some ultimate decisions that are being made. It's great to have growth in the village. It's great to have plans, but residents need to have the opportunity to also contribute their thoughts, the ones who are going to be most impacted by the decisions that are being made. So this can be done. I guess the question is how to facilitate. Um, I think that there should be a two-way communication for the board meetings, especially if they're televised. There can be an open forum similar to this. And I know that it already exists, but it has to be improved on because there's not opportunity for people to get their questions heard and answered during the time allotted.
Thank you. Mr. Gaeta.
Yes, uh, you heard that before with coffee with the board and we have that um a quarterly. But the thing is that uh every Monday with our meetings, the board meeting and as far as even with the committee meetings, there is a portion of the meeting that is set aside. And anyone can call in and because we give the telephone number, that if they have any questions um that it can be answered, or they can come in in person. And well, that's been difficult, but that's just been lifted where we can have at least fifty percent of the people coming in. And do they? Yes, they do. And when they have questions, we answer them. And if we don't have the answer right there, if it's something that has to do with public works, the director of Public Works is there to answer it. If it has to be with code enforcement, there's somebody from code. If it happens to be for the police department or on the fire department, the directors or the chiefs are there to answer these questions. But it's like anything else, if you don't ask us, how can we give the answer to you or correct whatever it is? Oh, my time is up, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Well, I I like what trustee Gaeta said. The system is in place. We just need to make the residents be aware that there is a system for them to voice their concerns and issue. And the village will address that. Uh, we just need to make, do a better job. I had, when I was walking door to door, I had this one lady talk to me ten minutes just about her sidewalk where she had complained to the village and nothing has been done, even though the village inspector came out and said, yes, that needs to get addressed. And I told her, hey, sometime they just missed it, just send them an email so they have something in their email saying, hey, we need to address this issue. So there's a system in place. We just need to make the residents be aware. This is what you knew if you have a concern and address, and we will try to do our best to solve the issues as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Mills.
Okay, um, as uh trustee Gaeta was saying about our coffee with the board, those are always open to the residents. We advertise them. And it's a less formal atmosphere. People are more comfortable. We're not sitting up at the top dais, dais uh looking down on them. We're on their level. And to be honest, a lot of great ideas have come from residents from those coffee with the boards over the years. Also, people might not be aware that on our website every week, prior to the meeting are the agendas for what's coming up at that meeting that Monday night and even the packet information. So people can always go to those sites, read what's coming up on a board or committee meeting and be informed that way. Also, communication is the key, but any resident can email the mayor or any of us trustees, our addresses are right on the website and our phone numbers, I believe, are on there too. But always respond to us and we will get back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
I think coffee with the board is a great thing. However, quarterly I don't think is not enough. Do it once a month, twice a month. Not every board member needs to be at every one. And do it at different times of day. You know, I know there were many things I was working when my kids were young and I couldn't get them into programs because things were only offered during the day. So I think we have to make sure we're offering things at different times for people, different days of the week, and offering them more often. Um, also, we need transportation for people to get to them, which goes back to our transportation issue. I'd like to see the Hoffman Estate Citizen revamped. I think a lot of people see it and think it's the same information and they just don't even read it and get rid of it. There's a lot of information in the citizen about what's going on, but if you're not reading it, you're not going to know. So I'd like to see some change in the Hoffman Estate Citizen, which is our newsletter. Sorry.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Arnett.
Um, yeah, I have to agree with uh trustee Mills, trustee Gaeta. Um, and basically everybody. Um, yes, we do have the coffee with the board. Um, of course, during COVID, we didn't, we didn't have it unless it was actually virtual. Um, we do list a phone number during the meetings. Um, and we do stay the whole meeting until, you know, if somebody calls, we answer it. Um, we do have um the village manager who actually also takes everybody's names, addresses, emails, phone numbers. If there's any questions during the meeting, he finds out the information and he gets back to that, that homeowner who has those questions. Um, just completely lost my train of thought. Sorry, that's all.
All right. Well, as I see time, it now requires that we move on to our closing statements. Candidates, you will have one minute each and we'll begin with Mr. Gaeta.
Yes, you know what? I, for years, I've had a quote from Vince Lombardi. And I would like just to read this because I think it just fits in. Individual commitment to a group effort, that is what makes a team work, a company work, a society work and civilization works. And that's the greatest thing that we have with this administration right now because we all work together and with the experience that we have to go forward. And what we just came through at last year proves that this administration knows exactly what it is doing. It's not guessing with anything. And the thing is though, and why is that? And we go back to that same word that I keep using, and that is experience. But yes, we're moving forward without a doubt and we will continue to do that. And I'm very proud to be serving and living in Hoffman Estates. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel, your closing statement.
So to my fellow residents, let me say this. All the candidates here have the same goals, to make Hoffman Estates grow to greatness. However, the path we choose to get to that goal differs. I think, let me, if you're one of those residents that are questioning the status quo or if you're happy with the progress or more accurately lack thereof progress in the last two decades, Hoffman Forward State, uh Hoffman Forward Team is the choice. We will think long-term, not short-term. We will not let a corporation dictate where they want to place their building and not think long-term how it will impact that area or the residents that will come and move in that area. We will tell the corporation, hey, these are the choices. We have our residents' priority and number one. Growing Hoffman Forward is the goal of every single candidate here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mills, your closing statement, please.
First of all, I want to thank the uh, the League of Women Voters and the Schaumburg Library for giving us this opportunity. Um, it's always interesting to listen to everyone. I think we're all in here for the same goal as Mr. Patel has said. We want to see this town survive. We want to see this town thrive. And I love Hoffman Estates. I, I never thought I'd be here as long as I've been and I appreciate every day. Um, I feel that we need that experience to continue, especially given the delicate nature of uh of business as we're going forward following this pandemic. Now is not the time to have to stop and learn and, and shoot from the hip. You need to be able to have that experience to get you through this timeframe, especially with our budgets and with reopening everything in town. Hopefully, we can get you to vote for us and we thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Hi, thank you so much for today. Um, I guess I just bring fresh ideas and fresh perspective. Uh, my ability to communicate, I'm a good listener. I don't always have all the answers. None of us do, but I'm willing to work to find them out. I have experience working with people, working with teams, working on boards. Uh, and I was raised to believe if you see something you disagree with, don't just complain, be part of the change. And I just want to be part of the change to bring Hoffman Estates to grow to greatness and to move Hoffman Estates forward.
Thank you, Ms. Arnett.
Thank you, and I agree with trustee Mills. Thank you guys very much for putting this on and inviting us to join in this. Um, this is my first four years I just went through. Um, I'm still learning. I probably will be learning every day that I do this. Um, I appreciate everybody here and I respect everybody's opinions. Um, I, you know, as everyone knows, I grew up in Hoffman Estates. I love this village. I just want to keep it going to greatness. I want to provide whatever our homeowners and the community needs that we can actually get them and give them. Um, we do hope for your support. We, all we want is best for the community and the village and all of our residents here because we love you guys. You guys are all of our families. And we just want as best as we can for the village. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Murray, your closing statement, please.
So we all kind of, it's been touched on how we share the common goal. There's nobody that is running for trustee or wants to be a trustee that doesn't have a passion for the village and for wanting to help people. That's just the nature of this job. Um, and I understand there's something nostalgic about a forty-year mayor and his incumbent trustees. Um, people are resistant to change. I'm resistant to change. I made an analogy about having to buy a new car during a previous interview with the Daily Herald. And um, you know, I was not eager to do that, but sometimes you have to recognize the costs associated with hanging on to the old outweigh the benefit of replacing it with the new. Um, so as far as village departments, um, the Hoffman Forward Team, we have the support of the village police department, Public Works, and the unprecedented endorsement of the village fire department. That should say something to village residents about our capability and about the trust that exists with, with our coworkers.
Thank you. As we bring this forum to a close- As we bring this forum to a close, I want to thank the candidates for their participation. We'd like to encourage all candidates to recycle their campaign signs. Members of the public can do so as well. Please visit the League of Women Voters Palatine Area website at www.lwvpalatinearea.org for details. If you are not a registered voter, you can find registration on our website as well. On behalf of the League of Women Voters and the Schaumburg Library, thank you all for coming. And don't forget, early voting begins on March 22. There's plenty of election available, information available on the league website. Please participate in our democracy by casting your ballot. Your vote is your voice. Thank you and have a great day.
Just about.
Thank you very much.
Bye bye. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Thank you, Kate.